We're ready, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'd like to call the order, the February 7th, 2023 meeting of the Marietta City Council, and we will be called to order. Roll call, would the city clerk please determine a quorum?
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Protem Stone.
Present.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to public comments, closed session items only. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on closed session items only?
Seeing none.
Thank you so much. Announcement of closed session items.
As listed on the agenda, the city council will meet in closed session on two items, CS1, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to enable the city council to consider negotiations and to receive an update from its negotiators regarding that certain real property APNs 913191017, 913191026, 913191023, 913180085, and 913180086. The city's real property negotiators, city manager, assistant city managers, development services director, economic development director, public works director, city engineer, and the city attorney. The city council will also meet on closed session item number two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.94, initiate litigation in two cases.
With that, we will go into closed session, and we will reconvene at 5:00 PM with a workshop. All right. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order. We are reconvening from our closed session, and we're moving on to our workshop. Roll call, could the city clerk please determine a quorum, please?
Councilmember Warren.
Present.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone.
Present.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our workshop, review of citywide use fee update and city council discussion. Staff, may we have the staff report, please? And you guys are here.
Yes, we are. Mayor DeForest, good evening. Honorable Mayor, council members, members of our community and city staff. My name is Javier Carcamo. I am the Director of Finance for the City of Marietta. The workshop this afternoon is to present you, city council, and as well as to our residents and the business community, the user fee study that we initiated around a year ago. We wanted to present the opportunity to city council as well as the community to share their feedback on the user fee study report. Tonight, I am joined with our accounting supervisor, Ashley Lopez, our city consultant with Weldon Financial Services, Mike Medve, and as well as the various department directors and managers that have contributed to the development of the user fee study, which, as I stated earlier today, we have been working for over a little, up for over a year now, and certainly numerous of long hours and days and hour, number of hours that we have spent to complete this comprehensive user fee study. So our agenda for tonight, we will provide you a brief background on the project itself, kind of share with you some of the studies that we have done in the past, the laws and regulations that are around the calculation of the user fee. We'll go over the study objectives, the scope of work, the data used and gathered, staff participation, and the, kind of share with you the order of work that has been completed so far. We will share the highlights of the study by the fee group or department, some policy consideration for you to provide some feedback to staff, as well as we'll share with you what's the next step in the process. At this point, I'll go ahead and turn the presentation over to Ashley Lopez for the next few slides.
The city's last comprehensive user fee study was completed in November 2017 in preparation of the 2018-19 user fee schedule. Prior to that, the most recent comprehensive user fee study had been completed in 2009. Historically, the city has brought a fee update to council annually in between those two studies, primarily to add new fees or remove fees no longer used. The city has not updated fees since the 2018-19 user fee schedule. Therefore, the current fees assessed today are the same fees that were established in the 2018-19 user fee study. The last study did not contain any inflationary adjustment such as Consumer Price Index, while we know that the cost of doing business has gone up primarily on both personnel and operating costs. In general, this process takes about six months, although the process was delayed some due to staffing shortages and project priority. The user fee study was a collaboration between finance, our consultant at Weldon, and other city departments to identify any changes in fees, including adding new fees, removing obsolete fees, and identifying any process changes that could affect the fees charged for services. City staff worked closely with the city's consultant, Weldon, to provide time and data required for this study. Municipal Code Section 3.32 allows for the city to recover costs of providing services. Recovery of costs includes direct and indirect costs of providing services. Government Code Section 66013 and 66014 restrict fees charged for some services from exceeding the reasonable cost of providing the service. Now, I'll throw it back to Javier.
Thank you, Ashley. So the, so why are we doing this study today? What specifically are user fees? The user fees are set by local government to help recover the cost of providing services or a program that benefits an individual, a group, or a business rather than the community as a whole. This means that the individual or organization receiving the services pays for the services receiving. For example, a community member coming in for a building permits, planning and development applications, business license, and/or the use of our city's facilities. However, there are many services that benefit the broader community, and these services are funded by the sales tax and property taxes primarily. For examples, public safety services, infrastructure, and parking maintenance. So it is important to distinguish between the two, given that both revenue sources, one benefits the broader community while the other benefits a specific individual. So the primary objective of the user fee study is to determine the reasonable full cost of providing the services to the individual, group, or organization receiving the services. Other objectives include calculate the fee or services cost individually and develop a rationale for setting the fees. So primarily, we determine what the full cost of providing the services, and that becomes a rationale. We want to ensure that our fees are up to date and that we're not overcharging our consumers for the services being rendered. Identifying the proposed subsidy amount, if applicable, for each of the, for each fee in the model. We ensure that the calculation comply with local and state law. We develop a comprehensive list of fees to ensure that as we, as the city move forward, we knew services that we include those fees. As well as another objective is to maintain consistency with city policies and goals. And one of our key council goals is to maintain a high-performance organizations that value fiscal sustainability, and this is one of the projects that supports that specific goal. Scope of the study, at this point, I will go ahead and turn the presentation over to our consultant with Weldon Financial Services, Mike Medve.
Good evening. My name is Mike Medve with Weldon, and I'll be going through the scope of the study and each of the individual departments. So we included 12 departments or divisions in our study. They are listed here, business licenses, the CSD, Parks and Rec, library, miscellaneous citywide fees, code enforcement, building and safety, planning, public works engineering, fire, police, and GIS. And, let's see. So the way that we approached each of these divisions, we usually do it individually, is by determining a departmental overhead, and that's a combination of direct expenditures and also the cost of the management versus the direct service providers. So that's the first two bullet points there. We also, through our cost allocation plan, we figure out an indirect overhead rate from the central services that don't directly provide services to people. We establish a productive hours rate to make sure that we are attributing the cost of each staff member to the hours that they're going to be providing services and not meeting time or vacation time, things along those lines. We meet directly with staff to figure out for each fee, basically who does what and for how long. It is a very detailed, intensive process, and we definitely appreciate the time that the city staff members take out of their busy schedules to help us to put together those timetables. And then, after we've kind of done a draft of those fees, we get, we get feedback from the individual department and also from the city in general to make sure that what we're putting together is consistent with their goals. And throughout the process, we have, we get, we get a lot of help from our, from our point person and making sure that the analysis is meeting their expectations and following the methods that we sent out to from the beginning. So here is kind of what I, what I discussed in the previous slide, but with a more kind of visual demonstration. We start off by developing the user fee model. We input the existing fees, and we also collect data from the cost allocation plan and the overhead rates and fully burdened hourly rate calculations that we've put together. The next step is to meet with staff, update the fees based on any changes in the timetable. Or for, I believe, you know, most of the fees, it's just allowing the new hourly rates to filter through the model that we already have, assume that there are no changes. For new fees, we would do a, you know, kind of a build them from the ground up method. And then, after we've developed our cost analysis, we go through each fee and, and, you know, we don't just automatically set it at the full cost. We would look and see if there are fees that, that you want 100% cost recovery on. And there may also be fees, like I think Parks and Rec is a good example, where a certain portion of it should be subsidized to increase participation and ensure the, the community benefits of that service are properly subsidized by the general fund in those cases. After we've finalized the fees, we put together a report that, I believe you guys have a copy of, that explains our methodology and satisfies the code requirements for what it takes to be able to change the fees. We go over this with staff and see if there are any changes that need to be made, and then finalize it. And then, I believe right now, we are in between that, those two final columns. But the last step, which would be in the future, is to hold a public hearing to establish the fees. So now I'm going to just summarize for each department what kind of changes you can expect when looking through the new fee schedule. Business licenses, and I should clarify that this is, this is for the, the aspect of the business license that falls under the, under the scope of the user fee. We did it based on a time-based analysis. Seven of the fees will be increasing, two of the fees will remain the same, three will decrease. The average for the entire segment of fees is an increase of 8%. Community service district, this is, again, purely time-based analysis. We found that the flat fees were mostly below the full cost of providing the service. So there's eight fees that will be increasing, 11 new fees that we added, no decreases, and the average fee increase is 122%. Parks and Rec, these fees tended to be based on policy usage and market factors. Generally, you, you do want to give the community the feeling that Marietta's fees are comparable with the city surrounding it, and you also want to encourage, you know, the, the use of these types of programs that enhance the, the general well-being of city residents. We increased 52 fees, we established 94 new ones. Three are going to be decreased, and 33 remain the same. We also changed five fees to be based on the actual cost, which would mean kind of putting together an invoice for those rather than having a, a flat fee or percentage-based fee. And the average fee increase is 27%. For library, it's, it's not quite as much reliant on the time-based approach. It's a mixture of penalties, renters, rentals, and user fees, with the penalties and rentals being the city having more latitude as to set those. The time-based analysis was also used. We, city's recommending an increase to 17 fees, eight would remain the same. There are no decreases, and we would add 18 new fees, and the average fee increase is 12%. Miscellaneous citywide fees, this would be non-departmental type actions. It was primarily time-based. We found that the flat fees were mostly below full cost. So we're increasing 11 fees, two will be decreased, one new fee is added. One of the fees is going to be changed to a per-kilowatt charge rather than a per-hour fee, and 24 fees will remain the same. It's an average fee increase of 1%, probably because so many of the fees are unchanged. For code enforcement, it's, it's a mixture of the citations, which the city has latitude to set at what they feel is appropriate versus, and then user fees, which were time-based analysis. So we're going to be increasing six, three will remain as they are. There are no decreases, and four new fees will be added. The average increase is 17%. For building and safety, this is a, this is a time-based analysis. It's going to be for, you know, building and safety is generally for services that benefit the individual at the building counter rather than a general benefit to the citizens. We increased 564 fees, there are six fees that are decreasing, seven new fees. And we're changing 10 fees from per square foot to actual cost. Again, that's the kind of invoice approach with the fully burdened hourly rates. 31 of them will remain the same, and the average fee increase is 15%. For planning, it's mostly the time-based approach, much like building and safety. Before the update, they were heavily subsidized for planning services. So we're going to increase 41 of them, decrease three, 21 will remain the same. Nine fees will change to the consultant actual cost or deposit-based from, over from a flat fee, and the average fee increase is 16% for the, for the flat fees. Public works engineering, again, similar to the previous two. So time-based cost analysis, the current fees are heavily subsidizing. We're increasing 50 fees, decreasing 13, 22 new fees, and 105 of the fees will remain as they are. The average fee increase is 3% for the flat fee ones. For fire, it's mostly a time-based cost analysis. Again, most of the fees were below cost, so we have an increase to 226 of those fees. Three will decrease, 44 new fees. Three will remain as-is, and the average fee increase for fire is 25%. For police, like fire, mostly time-based, and they are generally, at the moment, below full cost. Will be increasing 13, one will decrease, one new fee. 15 will remain as-is, and the average fee increase is 22%. And for GIS, again, time-based cost analysis primarily. Flat fees are mostly below full cost. We're going to be increasing the general and professional services fee. The processing fee will remain as it is, and the average fee increase is 10%. I'm going to give it back to Javier now.
Thank you, Mike. So for, as part of our study that's been presented to you, we are also including some policy for your consideration as part of the study. So as a summary, the general standard is that individuals or groups who receive the private benefit from the services should pay 100% of that cost. However, the study does have, as Mike mentioned, that some fees are below cost primarily to increase participation from the community in certain specific programs or services. So in, in some circumstances, in circumstances, that subsidy is an effective public pool, public policy tool to utilize. So in those cases, encourage participations and promote access to those services and ensure compliance when the, compliance from customers when the cost is prohibited. Unlike the last study that was done back in 2017, we are recommending to include a inflation factor to adjust the fees annually, such as the CPI. This would allow that, moving forward, that the fees doesn't have such a huge increase at, at every time we do a study. So supposed to having a 15, 20%, or 25% increase, that increase will gradually be adjusted on an annual basis. And we recommend that we perform this comprehensive analysis every five years. While we enjoy working with Mike and Pretty from Weldon, it does take a lot of work and time, and it could be cost prohibitive as well if we do it annually and offset some of the costs associated with the fees that we're imposing and some of the cost recovery as part of the study. So our recommendation is to do the, this study every five years. This report, the agenda report, this presentation will be available on the webpage. So we have a webpage dedicated for the comprehensive user fees to inform our community of the, of the process, is part of our transparency, and also to seek feedback as well from our community. So the proposed fee for 23, 24 is in the city's website as well as our current fees that were basically established back in 2017, 2018. It includes as well as the previous user fee schedules, prior years. The next step in the process is we incorporate any of your directions and feedback that we get tonight from you into our next report. We were scheduled to hold a public hearing on February 21st. Subsequently, a second public hearing on March 7th to adopt the fees. And the proposed fees will be effective starting July 1st, 2023. And with that concludes our report. I want to thank Mike and Pretty from Weldon for all of the work and support and guidance through this process. Certainly, Ashley, who has been working very directly with each department, gathering the data, putting the data together, and also, of course, every department head and their staff who has contributed to the development of this report. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Thank you for an in-depth study. I appreciate all your time and effort, because I know that was long hours. So thank you so much. I know my fellow council will have many questions, so I will look to the dais and see Councilmember Lavelle. Would you like to start us off?
Sure. Thank you for that presentation. Just a few questions. The five-year frequency, is that adopted from another local city, county, state, federal recommendation? How does that decided or recommended?
The five years is the best practice.
Okay, so it's pretty common throughout?
It's very common for most local governments to do a, a study every five years.
Okay, thank you. I think I heard or read that there were some fees that would be removed completely. I didn't see that. Was that part of, was that true or not? Did I mishear that?
I believe there were certain fees that were removed primarily because the, the service may be obsolete. One example I can give you, I think it's documents on a CD, or CD, which we no longer utilize that anymore. We use USB nowadays, or by email, when we have to provide records.
Just, not super important, but do you have any idea of how many you removed versus how many you added?
Don't have the specific number, but I would say it, it could be counted with my hands, but I mean, anywhere between five and 10 fees.
Okay, removed from the schedule?
Yeah.
And with the old fees removed, although very negligent or insignificant, did it have any financial impact? Would it be at all worth mentioning, I guess, if you remove fees? How, how that impacted the new fees?
I, I would say would probably be insignificant in terms to the fiscal impact by removing those fees.
Okay. And then, the recommendation to move with an annual CPI, tying it to CPI, the, the inflationary marker. If CPI were to go down in any given time period, you know, pending a recession or some type of long-term decrease, would the city also follow that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. Awesome, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. And moving on to Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for the report. I know the hours you put into this, so I do appreciate your time and all the hard work you put into it. I too have a couple of questions. First of all, can you explain to me what does a miscellaneous citywide consist of? Seemed a little vague to me.
Yeah, these are probably fees that doesn't pertain to a very specific department. Let me see if I can give you an example really quick by looking at my screen here.
Oh, the clerk?
A clerk, yeah, like a, like a return check fee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's, that's good, all right. And could you give me an example of what a subsidized fee would be? Just, and what, what would we be subsidizing for what part of Parks and Rec or whatever?
For, for what department?
For any, what would a subsidized fee consist of? I mean, what, why would we do that?
Well, as I share with you, in certain, in certain circumstances, we want to subsidize the fee to promote, to promote, promote our citizens to enjoy those services. So in the case for access to... access to our public pool that usually subsidize and you normally you will see that a resident will pay less than someone from the outside who might be paying full cost.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you. And my last question to you, projects that are in the queue. So we have projects that are in the queue and there are fees already established for those projects. This moves forward, what happens with those projects that are in the queue? Do they go automatically to the new fees or they grandfather with the old fees? If they're in the if they're already in the process of going through all of the planning and everything?
So if we do have projects in in the process where the that specific project may establish some fees or may update some fees, that might probably be at the right time to take those actions. Specifically to those fees.
Okay, so what I'm kind of getting to is let's say that somebody has, they're going to build a pool. I'm just going to throw that out. And they they know their fees are going to be X amount of dollars, but they don't have everything approved yet and they haven't paid everything and then the new fees come into play. Do they pay the fees that they budgeted for or do they need to pay the increase?
I guess it all depends if when they will come and pull the permits.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Councilmember Holiday?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question since Councilmember Warren asked some of mine. Good job. I know that in the past, I don't remember if this city or another, that we subsidize fees where we want compliance too, correct? And so like the one that comes to mind is like water heater replacements. We require an inspection for that, which a lot of people aren't aware of because they'll go to Home Depot and buy water heater and install it themselves. We require that inspection for safety reasons, correct?
Correct.
And I know cities have in the past sometimes brought that fee down to nominal or nothing to encourage compliance to make sure that our residents are doing things safe to where we'll send somebody out and inspect it and say, yeah, you're good to go. Have any of those considerations taken place in this fee study?
No. So the the study itself, our goal is to identify those fees, determine the the full cost of recurring for the services being provided. However, in those type of situations, as you mentioned as a one example, it is a council policy, it can be also a council decision to set those fees below the the actual cost for that very specific purpose. So those discussions can happen, you know, that's the direction you would like to give us tonight for any specific fees. That is something that we can take back and adjust the fees as necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem Stone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to thank our entire team, our city team, for their year-plus-long efforts. And I do not have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have a couple of questions. I appreciate the increase with benefit for individual directly instead of a broader community benefit. So thank you for looking at those. I do have one question on community service on the fees. I noticed that there's, and maybe I read it wrong, but a hundred and twenty-two percent increase. Can you elaborate a little bit on what that is consistent of?
Yeah, absolutely. I can give my comments here. So primarily, there were certain fees that actually drove the the average higher than for the other fees. So I'll consider this some of the outliers in terms to the calculation. So I'll give you a specific example. The parking wreck, parking facility usage, security deposit that went up approximately four hundred percent. So that's one of the outliers that it's really, so not all fees increased one hundred and twenty-two percent. It's only a couple of them for, I believe there's about four that were higher than a hundred percent that are driving that that average increase.
Okay, and does that also include the new fees that you're adding to get that percentage to go higher too? So if you added a new fee when you look at your percentage, does it also drive that number up?
So normally if there are new fees, there's nothing to compare to, so you know, there's no change.
No change. Okay. Also, I noticed the planning, building and safety, all benefit individual directly and those are going up substantially as well. And I'm really glad to see that we are going to recoup some of those costs for our planning piece. So thank you for that. And I think that concludes my comments. Any other comments? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Seeing none.
Councilmember, any comments, further discussion? Councilmember Holiday?
I would like to suggest that we do give direction to staff to look at those fees, like the water heater example I gave and those that encourage compliance that might not otherwise happen to have them bring a list back to us with what those fees might be and give us the opportunity to see if we want to reduce those.
All right, I would agree with you completely and I would ask if we could bring those back and have a list of the fees that would possibly help our community be in compliance.
Just for, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, compliance for safety concerns or compliance in general?
Safety.
Okay.
Yeah, safety concerns, to be specific. Thank you. Councilmembers, all right, so with that said, seeing that we have fifteen minutes, we will be in recess until six o'clock when we will reconvene our regular meeting. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. This is our six PM regular meeting. And Madam City Attorney, do we have any closed session actions to report out?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have two items of closed session. The first one was to confer with real property negotiators. And that item, the council was updated and there's no reportable action. The second item was to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D four regarding two cases. Again, in that item, the council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. And moving on to roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Holiday?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone?
Present.
Mayor DeForest?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present. And may I make a note for the record that Councilmember Holiday was present for closed session number one and two. Is that correct, Madam Mayor?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. For our pledge of allegiance today, we have Brielle and Jacob Brand. I'd like to invite them up to the front. And also for our invocation, it will be led tonight by Pastor Sal Rangel from Calvary Baptist Church. We'd like to thank him for his dedication to our city council and for always being here to give us a wonderful invocation. Also prayers for your wife. I hear she's having a procedure. I know that the entire council as well as the entire community of Marietta sends prayer and well wishes for her procedure. So moving on first and foremost to our pledge of allegiance, would you all stand?
Place your right hand over your heart, speak slowly, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we invite you to come into among our midst, Lord, and invite you to the city council meeting. Lord, what is discussed this evening in our meeting is important to the citizenship of Marietta, our environment, our business and our recreation. Lord, we ask that you give wisdom to each council member as they've gone over from one meeting to the next, as they look over things that are going to be discussed and meditated on and make decisions that affect our our city, our city's growth, our city's business and our citizenship. Lord, we ask at this time that you bless our law enforcement along with the rest of our first responders in the city, Lord, and our military service members, Lord, who stand ready to give their lives for our freedom just as our law enforcement and first responders are within the city of Marietta. We just thank you for them. Lord, I ask you to bless all that goes on here tonight in in your city and we just thank you for your hedge of protection around us as a as a citizen, as a as a city, Lord, and which enables us to to be proud, Lord, of the city that you've blessed us with and the safety of the citizenship here. And Lord, I bring up not only my wife Christine for her heart procedure, but you know everybody here, you know what's going on in their lives, Lord. And any of those who need your help, Lord, we ask that you bless them and give what needs to be accomplished, Lord. And we know that you're a a great physician and, Lord, that you can heal. And we ask that you do that not only for Christine, but for those who are in need of it. We ask and give thanks for all these blessings. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you so much. Now, moving on to presentations, our first presentation tonight will be from Big Brothers Big Sisters Mentorship celebrating National Mentoring Month. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Crystal Joseph, Director of Resource Development and Events from Big Brothers Big Sisters is here to present.
My apologies. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Crystal Joseph. I am our Director of Development and Events for Big Brothers Big Sisters. We just capped off a wonderful January as National Mentoring Month. I know we are a week into February, but it was hard to get into all of the the city council meetings that we needed to be present for. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about Big Brothers Big Sisters and what National Mentoring Month is. So forgive me as I look up high on here. But here at Big Brothers Big Sisters, we are very focused on one-to-one mentoring and that is what we do. So we do differentiate from other programs because of that one-to-one component. And what we do here, we are very JEDI-focused. So JEDI is our foundation, stands for justice, equity, diversity and inclusion. We are also very youth-centered, of course. We are volunteer-driven and like I mentioned before, we are one-to-one. So how do we do this? Well, we focus on four of our key foundation areas. So mentoring is all about that upward and social mobility. If you think back to, you know, when you were a young one, just, you know, a little while ago, you think about that circle of influence that you had in your life. And when we think about our youth today, who are they connected to? How did you know that you could be a mayor, a city council person, work for the city? How did you know that? Someone at some point planted that seed in you. And so that is what we are here to do, to inspire that future focus. So we want to enable that social capital connection. We want to focus on that social, emotional and mental health, especially through these difficult past few years we've all been through. We want to look at that future workforce and those career successes so that we can step outside, you know, maybe mom and dad or, you know, as a single parent, maybe you only saw that you could be here in your future career. We want to be able to see what else that career success can be. And we want to influence and enable our youth to make those positive choices because it is all about that positive influence that we have in our life that can get us through that next step for that economic mobility. So just a quick impact of our numbers for the audience. So I like to say we are eight years young, although the agency has been around for over over a hundred years. We are a tri-county agency that focuses both on Orange County, San Bernardino and Riverside Counties, but we've only had our presence here in the IE for the last eight years. But in those eight years, we've done some pretty amazing things with our four mentoring programs that we've had and we've serviced over three thousand youth and I love seeing that impact. Three thousand is an amazing number as we've partnered with over twenty-one school districts, including most recently, we are partnered here in Marietta. We're very proud of that partnership. But we can do so much more and just want to share those are pretty cool numbers. And then next, so here, I love that picture. So here are some pictures of our students that we do have here. We have a great partnership with Marietta Mesa High School and some elementary schools in the area. And this is called our High School BIGS program. So we have students from Marietta Mesa that are volunteering and partnered up with elementary school students. So this is so impactful on both sides so that the high school students can get to have that relationship with these these young kids. And obviously, they're having a fantastic time. I just love that picture. So we're looking also to grow more with our school districts in the area. So together here at Big Brothers Big Sisters, we ignite potential. What is it that we do? What are these outcomes we've seen? Well, especially in the last few years, our students, we have a pre-survey and a post-survey at least a year into the program. And our students are reporting an eighty-seven percent improvement in mental health, including a reduction in depressive symptoms because somebody shows up for them, somebody cares about them, right? That's outside of that that family circle. And let's be honest, some of these family circles are just really, really difficult that our that our youth are a part of. Eighty-four percent reported an improved academic performance. One of my favorite stats is ninety-eight percent graduate from high school on time, right? And of that, I think it's almost fifty percent are the first ones in their family to even graduate from high school. Sixty-seven percent go on to college and that could be community college as well as a four-year degree. So with that, just want to say we are bigger together here at Big Brothers Big Sisters. So thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share about National Mentoring Month, which happened in January, but it's February. And if anyone is interested in being a part of our program, we do have our general community-based program that anybody can be a part of. We ask for a minimum of three hours a month, twice a month for a minimum of a year. We partner you up with a youth that's local and you guys get to do fun stuff. We do all the thorough fingerprinting, background check, all of the the liability pieces to keep our students safe, but is an excellent opportunity for folks to be a part of. And anybody can go online and learn more at iebigs.org/volunteer. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Any comments from my council? Councilmember Lavelle?
I think this is a really cool presentation. Thank you for being up here and thank you for doing this for the community. This looks like the numbers speak for themselves, but I think your enthusiasm shows more. So thank you.
Thank you.
Council, thank you, Councilmember Warren.
Ditto. No, excellent. It's a wonderful program. I've been involved with it for years, so I know how valuable it is to our youth. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Holiday?
Yes, excellent, excellent job. And you are needed now more than ever with the results of COVID and all the stuff that happened with our teens during that time. Of course, we didn't realize, a lot of people didn't realize what an impact was going to have on them. But it's you are needed now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mayor Protem Stone?
Thank you so much for your detailed presentation and I just concur with my fellow colleagues. So thank you so much.
I'd just like to say thank you for inspiring our future generations and we would love to take a photo with you.
Sounds great. Thank you all.
All right, moving on to our next presentation, Susan G. Coman Foundation Partnership, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, thank you. I have Jill Eaton with Susan G. Coman. She's here to provide a recap of the Foundation and the City of Marietta event.
Good evening. Um, thank you so much for, um, allowing me to be here this evening to, uh, make a presentation to the city council. I would like to invite a special guest of Coman, but also a special guest of City of Marietta. I'd like to invite the former mayor, uh, Mayor Ingram, if you would, yes, please join me. So, um, Mayor Ingram has also been, played a significant role with our walk last, last year and in the years past. And so I, you know, thank you. Um, the evening that I was here the last time was December 20th, when he was leaving, and so, um, this is a great opportunity for both of us to be up here and, and say a few words. But, um, before I get started, we do have a little video from, um, last year's walk. And so I'm hoping that we can cue that up and, and start with that, and then I'll say a few words.
Good morning, everyone. Do we have an amazing amphitheater here, or what? God bless you, and it's great to see so many survivors here. Today's an important day. We need to make sure that we keep pushing awareness, research, and early detection for breast cancer. And so today, enjoy your day. On behalf of the City of Marietta, as mayor and my colleagues, we want to present this proclamation and/or certificate of recognition for all the hard work and dedication that this organization has done to help those that have survived breast cancer and those that are working through it. God bless you, and have a fantastic day. We'll see you at the finish line.
So that was our, um, walk. When we first came back, you know, since COVID 20, uh, 2022, October the 9th, we, um, successfully had, um, 1,800 people that were registered, but technically speaking, there was probably 3,000 people plus at the, at Town Square Park. Yours truly was one of our, um, guests there, along with also Mayor Protem, Lori Stone. And we had ABC as our, um, as our, um, emcee that af- that morning. Um, and also David from The Morning Show at K-Frog. So we are so grateful for the partnership that we've had here with the City of Marietta. Um, we've been hosting the walk here at the park, um, since 2017, and we see a long, um, a long partnership and just cannot thank you enough for the generosity and allowing us to be and recognizing us as a signature event. Last year, like I said, we had 1,800 people that were registered, over 3,000 participants. We had more than 56 companies that were involved in some way, shape, or form. We had 160 teams. We thought we were only going to have 90. We also raised more than $170,000 just coming out at, at the beginning. This year, we are, this year, we're looking at coming out a little bit larger and stronger. Um, we have plans to be back Sunday, October the 8th, and looking forward to working with all of you to be here. We already are working with staff currently to get all of the things in place to go ahead and make that happen. And, um, looking at raising more than $215,000 to, to help those that are facing breast cancer here in our community, both male and female. And I know you can talk a lot about how that, uh, how that impacts a lot of people here locally.
Watch, we're going to all to laugh. I don't have much to say. I'm short on words. Figured everybody would roll their eyes on that. What an honor to be here, and I love seeing all of you. It feels like I'm at home. Um, this means a lot because I've lost two sisters to breast cancer. Um, Councilmember Stone has been engaged for 25-plus years in this. I know all of my colleagues and friends up here are supportive of it, and it's really important that we make sure that we're there for survivors, but also early detection because that's the key to surviving cancer, especially breast cancer, so that it doesn't get bad aesthetic. And so anything I could do, we need to thank the sponsors, the Atwan family and others that sponsored all the water, our city staff. There were so many people that are engaged in doing this, and, um, I think it's only going to get better. And you're going to have plenty of support up here because I know each one of these people personally, and I know they're all good people. And Crystal, I wanted to make you smile, Madam City Clerk. It's cold in here. God bless you, and thank you for all you do. Thank you, guys.
Can you stay kind of close because I'm still wanting to get a picture? We have a certificate of appreciation that we'd like to present the city, and also we brought some signs that say "We Are More Than Pink", and I'm hoping that we can get you guys down here to go ahead and, um, and get your photo. That's all right?
Wonderful, and thank you for choosing Marietta.
Thank you.
So we're so happy that you're here, and I'm looking forward to, um, October 8th.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot of fun.
Yeah, and we'd all like to say a few words. So, um, Mayor Protem Stone?
Thank you so much, Jill, for coming. As a founding board member of the Susan G. Coman Breast Cancer Foundation and the inaugural Race for the Cure Chairperson, um, I think most of you know that my mother succumbed to breast cancer. Uh, she was diagnosed in May of 94 and passed away in December, so she went really, really quickly. But I want to thank the Susan G. Coman for all of your efforts in research. The amount of money, 25% of all the money that is raised goes to research, and we have come a long way, and women and men are living with breast cancer, or they're overcoming breast cancer. So again, I want to thank you so much. And I want to challenge our former mayor. I would love for you to be my co-chair in bringing teams to the next race for the cure. You said we had how many, Jill, show up?
160.
We had 160 teams?
Mm-hmm.
So how about if we say 250 teams?
Oh, my God. Yeah, that's awesome.
Are you, are you game?
Anything the Mayor Protem wants, I will accommodate.
Fantastic. Okay, so again...
How do you get the power?
I know people, Madam Mayor. That concludes my comments, and thank you again for everything that you do.
Thank you so much. So fortunate to work with you, um, since I've started here. And I just, it's going to be, it's going to be fun this year. Looking forward to it.
Um, Councilwoman Warren?
There are never going to be enough words to say thank you. Cancer is an ugly disease, no matter where they find it. And I'm a cancer survivor going on three years, and I couldn't be more proud because we found it early. So for all you do, for all your helping, God bless you, and thank you so very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Lavelle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thanks. Again, I'll echo what Mayor, my colleague had said. Thank you for doing this. Um, I was there this last year. Really unfortunate that you did have to take a brief hiatus, but there's, from my perspective, there's nothing cooler than seeing so many people outside being active, smiling, being with their families. And like, uh, former Mayor Ingram had said, bringing an awareness to an issue that, um, needs as much as possible to, to beat it. You know, if there's a chance, you need to get it early, and, um, this is an amazing effort. And I'd like to, with Councilwoman Lauren, uh, Lori Stone's, uh, proposition, maybe we should have competition in the teams between you two?
You're on. You are on, big guy.
You can count me in for that one as well.
You got it.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lavelle.
And last but not least, Councilmember Holliday?
Everything's a competition, correct? Yes, thank you. I don't know, um, anyone who doesn't, hasn't been touched by cancer of some sort or another. Um, my aunt had breast cancer, was a breast cancer survivor, um, decades ago, even when the, uh, research hadn't been done. Um, unfortunately, she passed away of a ruptured ascending aortic aneurysm years later. So it was rough to, to beat breast cancer and then to be taken out by that, but, um, it's, it's a disease that affects everyone, so we certainly appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Holliday.
As a closing note, make sure you get tested. This means all men, too, because men are not absolved from getting breast cancer and pectoral cancer. And, uh, check to see if you're carrying the BRCA gene. That's a good start. Would you agree?
I would totally agree. Thank you so much.
And we would love to come down and hold your signs and take a picture with you tonight.
Perfect. I want you to join for the picture.
And Jill, Jill, you, why don't you go between the mayor and Councilmember Holliday? Because then you won't break up the sign. Yeah, there we go. And don't, don't all hate me, but how about like one big step that way, so we can center this? Very kind of you. Thank you. Okay, look here about that. One, two. Thank you guys very much. Ready? One, two, three. All right.
All right, moving on. Approval agenda. Are there any, uh, changes to the agenda? Crystal, don't knock everything down.
Seeing none.
Could I have a motion and a second of approval, please? We have, we have nothing here, Madam City Clerk. Thank you for the repair.
Thank you, Kimberly. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you so much. Uh, Department Commission Reports and Announcements. Madam City Manager?
I have nothing this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. And Governing Board Commission or Committee Reports. Um, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, we will hear Governing Body Commission Committee Board Reports. This is the opportunity for city council members to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, and commission committees and our boards' meeting attendance. Report shall not exceed three minutes. The city clerk will use a timer. We will start with Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Lavelle, Holliday, Mayor Protem Stone, followed by Mayor DeForest.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, on the 19th and 20th of January, I attended, along with my colleagues, the Marietta City Council Goal Setting Workshop, which was outstanding. And I wanted to thank our entire staff, city manager, and all of her directors for an outstanding workshop, and it was so informative. I learned so much. So thank you for all your time and effort that you put into it. On the 23rd of January, I also attended the RCTC Budget Impl- Implamation Committee Meeting via Zoom, where actions to be taken up, up tomorrow at the next meeting. And I also had the pleasure of attending the River RCTC Workshop, uh, over the last past, last week, Thursday and Friday, and got very updated on what RCTC is all about and how we can improve our traffic and our roads, and I'm going to work really hard to make sure that that happens. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Um, Councilmember Lavelle?
I have no updates. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holliday?
I also attended the, um, Marietta City Council Goal Setting Sessions on the 19th and 20th. Super informative, you know, uh, our staff is phenomenal, and I think we're going to look forward to some great things this year from, from Marietta. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mayor Protem Stone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With regards to our Mental Behavior Committee, I want to thank my fellow colleagues for, for their support and their vote on this very important commission. In just over two weeks, I have heard from a myriad of groups, organizations, and individuals that have reached out about the lack of services and resources, and they are very excited and have thanked us so much for, um, this wonderful benefit to our region. I also like to thank Supervisor Washington for pledging your support to get us information that our region desperately needs. I also attended RCA, and yesterday was my very first meeting, and I will tell you that I find that agency very interesting and looking forward to learning more about the impacts of development, our animal kingdom, our vegetation. And I, and what I am able to report out from that meeting is it does not appear that we will have a super bloom, uh, this year. At this time, definitely, but nature, as you know, is unpredictable. So that concludes my report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mayor Protem. Um, and I attended the RTA January meeting. And just to give an synopsis, a little review, um, RTA's ridership in December was up 36% compared to December of last year. And the new RTA's Go Mobile app is available for download and the Apple App Store and Google Play Store. So they were super excited to have that up and going. And in January, I know it's February, but in January, you could get monthly passes for $5. And hopefully, I'll be a little bit more punctual on my, um, updates, uh, as well. So, um, that is all I have to report, and thank you, everyone, for your Governing Body Commission Reports. Public comments. Madam City Clerk, on any non-agendized items?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, before we move on to the general public comment, I understand we have Darcy Burke from EVMWD who's requesting 10 minutes to speak. Can you confirm that to move forward, Madam Mayor?
Um, I definitely confirm that, and we'll go ahead and move forward with that now before we go on to any other public comment. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk.
I'm just waiting for the presentation. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council, staff, residents, guests. I would, I'd like to want to start this night by saying, this is, as Paul Harvey would say, if you're a little bit more seasoned, "The rest of the story." So you're going to hear from staff from probably all the water districts that serve you in the next few months, asking you to keep it up, to continue to be efficient, and, and I encourage that message. But what I really think is important is to come and tell you the truth about our water supply in California and how it's managed. The picture in front of you is Mammoth. They actually had to dig out a Carl's Jr. so you could drive through. That picture was taken last month with 205% of average snowpack. Next slide, please. So I, I'm going to go over this real quickly, but I'm going to kind of tell you where your water comes from and why that's important. I'm going to give you some information about drought, or as the governor likes to call it, drought conditions. A fact check, just so that you're more aware when you hear things in the media, what Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District is doing, what our region is doing, what we'd like, um, you all to do, and what we continue to ask our customers to do. Next slide, please. So we get our water from a lot of different sources here in California, at least Southern California, and tonight, I'm only going to talk about the State Water Project and the Colorado River, both of which I know you have heard in the news. Next slide, please. And first, let's start with last year. If you, any of you recall, the governor came out and said, "This is the worst drought in history. It's a mega drought. It's a 1,200-year drought." Well, actually, it was the 27th driest year since we've been keeping records for 121 years. And the driest record was 1976 and 1977, in which case, we got water allocations of 60% and 40%. And last year, if you recall, State Water Project contractors got 5%. So it wasn't the driest year on record, so it's kind of a fact check. It was a dry year, and it was, there had been cumulative dry years, but it still wasn't the worst two years on record. Next slide, please. So this picture was taken at the last, uh, snowpack measure. You see it on television every month. They go out there with the big stick, they stick it in the snow and they, or they stick it in the dirt, and they tell you what, what the snowpack is. And even during that press conference, we're at 205% of what we normally have. You heard Carlin Nemeth from the Department of Water Resources and the governor's staff telling you, "We still are in drought conditions." And you're like, "Well, how can that be if we have all this snowpack and all this water?" And the snowpack is full of water. There are years when that snowpack is dry, but this is not the case. So what's the, the, the impetus of this? There's a lot of environmental... There's a lot of environmental operations that restrict how we move water in California that you all need to be aware of, because it affects our ability to deliver water to you, for you to meet your strategic plans, for you to have new development and improve the quality of life and keep the quality of life that your residents have come to love and know. We look to our residents for water use restrictions. We look for our businesses for water use restrictions. You hear on the news that conserving is the answer. I'm going to tell you, it's not. Water supply is the answer. And finally, I'm going to talk about land fallowing and retiring very quickly, because we are an ag region. We depend on California wine country right here in Temecula. As a region, it's two billion dollars a year, and all of us depend on ag if you eat. If you don't eat, ag probably doesn't impact you, but ag is super important, not only to our families and our communities, but to the state. Next slide, please. I want you to just keep in mind, because on the news, you're going to hear a lot of things. We started this year, even though with record snowpack, at a five percent water allocation. That means, we contract for one-hundred percent of the water, and the governor said you get five. Then he came back and said, "No, wait. We have snow. You're going to get thirty percent." Woo, okay, thirty percent. Thirty percent, we, in water, we have water speak, so acre feet. We talk about acre feet. We're getting about one-point-two million more acre feet. That's a football field, full of water, twelve inches, goalpost to goalpost. Super Bowl season, we can all imagine what a football field looks like. So, that's enough for about three-point-six million families for a year. So, we should be all excited about that thirty percent, except in the month of January, the governor let, oh, six million acre feet go out underneath the Golden Gate Bridge for biological opinions, which would be enough water for over eighteen million Californians. These are laws and rules that we can change if we pay attention and they hear our voices. Next slide, please. Colorado River is a different story. They have a real drought, and we've over-allocated that. And when you hear us come back and say our water supplies have been cut, it's because we are looking at, as part of the greater metropolitan water district family, an eighty-five percent cutback if we can't come to agreement on how we're going to manage the shortfall. Next slide, please. Ag. The, there's a lot of rules and regulations and a lot of court rulings going on, and one of the governor's goals is to retire two million acres of fertile farmland. Last year alone, because of no water, their allocation was zero, and with water restrictions on pumping, they fallowed seven-hundred-and-fifty, they retired seven-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand acres. Retired means it will never be in production again. They'll do something else with it. Right now, it's a decibel if you drive through the five. That's minimum one job per acre. That's seven-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand jobs we've lost. And think of the food and, and national security as it comes to our food sources by not being to deliver water to our farmers. Next slide, please. So, at Elsinore Valley, we're in the forever business, not the for-right-now business. We plan thirty to fifty years out. We're only thirty percent built out. So, we needed to come up with new supply, because we can't rely on the governor or State Water Project. So, as a region, we came up with a regional resiliency plan. We are investing in Ocean D-Sell actively, in the South Orange County Ocean D-Sell Project, or the Doheenee Ocean D-Sell Project, as it's called. We're asking our customers to be efficient. Use what you need. Don't waste it. It's just like any other resource. And we're, we're continually planning for droughts and dry periods. Next slide. These are the agencies that are participating in our Regency Resiliency Plan. We have put money into, to projects, to studies. We're identifying what we would call the fast-track ones that we can get done sooner or later. We're exploring all options, because it's our job to deliver you water. It's not your job to conserve your way out of something that we need to plan for. But that also means that cheap water's gone. The more expensive water is what we're going after, because water is not an option, it's a necessity. Next slide, please. Silence is acceptance. So, I'm asking all of you on the dais to just use what you need, just like we ask our customers, to get involved. There's the California United Water Coalition. They're actually having a march in Sacramento on March first. There's a solve-the-water crisis. If you haven't heard about it before, it's something I would encourage you to participate in. There's more water now. It's just being, paying attention, and when you have the opportunity to meet with other legislators, whether it's the supervisor, or our assemblyman, or our senators, or our congressmen, tell them that water's important, because it is. Next slide. That's my contact information. You are very well represented by our President, Andy Morris, who's with me tonight. I just wanted to tell you the rest of the story. Water's my passion. It's what I've done for almost thirty years. I've been fortunate enough to speak at a lot of economic groups and others, and I'm happy to, my information is there. If you have questions, I'm happy to take them at those time. I really appreciate the opportunity this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our next public comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now is the time for public comment. Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject matter pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matter not listed. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Marshall Hamilton.
Hello, everybody. My name is Marshall Hamilton. I'm a supervisor at the Safe Family Justice Center, so we're your nonprofit victim service provider in the county. And I just wanted to take a couple of minutes of your time to talk about Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, which is February. So, wear your orange. We, here at the Safe Family Justice Centers, interface with a lot of victims. In 2022 alone, we serviced over four-thousand victims in the county. Eight-hundred of those were here in Marietta at our Marietta location, and two-hundred of those were children interfacing with some form of violence. Many parents don't discuss the risk of teens dating, because we think our teens aren't dating, right? Or they're not allowed to date. Or the biggest risk of teen dating is pregnancy. Due to that stigma, stigmatization, that word is really hard, many parents don't ask their kids about dating or talk to them about healthy relationships. This creates a really big risk factor in our community. The lack of information available about healthy relationships can be compounded by youth not seeing healthy relationships in their household. With, you know, eight-hundred victims that we served here in Marietta alone, we know that a lot of our households are serving, are, are seeing domestic violence, are seeing child abuse. And so, they may not see it at home, in their friends' homes, or they see unhealthy relationships perpetrated online, or, of course, in their movies and TV that they consume. We, when youth are exposed to violence or involved in dating violence, they often fall back into those patterns into adulthood. So, if they're in a violent relationship during their teen years, they're most likely going to continue that pattern as adults. This becomes, this puts them at higher risks to become adult victims or perpetrate crimes against their partners in the future and inflict another cycle of abuse on the generation to come. To aid in interrupting this cycle, the Safe Family Justice Centers and its Riverside County PAL program is hosting two Teen Dating Violence Workshops that are open to the community. One is tomorrow, February eighth, and one is the following week on the fifteenth. Both of those are from five-thirty to seven PM in our Temecula location off of Pajol Street. We are working really hard to launch a campaign. I have some flyers out there by the speaker boxes out there, and I'll also be in the back for a little bit today. If you will want to learn any more information about teen dating, dating, teen dating violence, I talk too fast. Teen dating violence, or if you're interested in learning how you can help, I'll be there. And you can also search us on our website, Safe Family Justice Centers. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Francisco Urbina.
Good evening, members of the Marietta City Council. Congratulations to new Councilmember Ron Holliday and John Lavelle. It's sometimes good to have new blood, new ideas. Congratulations to reelection of Councilwoman Cindy Warren, representing my fifth district. I live in Vintage Reserve. Anyway, sometimes, Vintage Reserve, we still need a restroom with running water and sink and, you know, soap, whatever, because of the COVID-nineteen and all of these other viruses and bacterias. I, I, and many of my neighbors in Vintage Reserve, who often cannot attend a council meeting because they commute from San Diego to Irvine, and they can't get here at the six PM starting time, we feel that it is a public safety issue to have restrooms with running water at a park where there is a children's playground and sports activities where they practice soccer, whatever. And some people in Vintage Reserve don't even visit the park because they live too far away from it, or if they do visit it, they're only there a short time, because porta-potties are disgusting, and there's no sink with running water, whatever. So, I've said it before, I'll say it again, you know, I'd like to have, you know, water flows downhill, City Council, direct the City Manager, to direct Ivan, to direct Leah Colick, who administers the landscaping and lighting district, to find funds to do a city engineer's report to find out how much would it cost in increased annual landscaping, lighting maintenance district fees to construct restrooms with running water and to maintain them. I would be for it. Second, you know, regional traffic issues. I, I don't know who currently from our City Council is the representative to the Verset County Transportation Commission and, you know, liaison to work with Caltrans, whatever, but we need an extension from Mescondido all the way up to, well, ideally to Corona and to the sixty and the two-fifteen interchange and the Riverside and Moreno Valley border, where there's two fast-track lanes in each direction, whatever, to relieve traffic congestion. And we might need, so that there's a total of, well, ideally of six lanes in each direction, including two in, in a fast-track manner, and especially the bottleneck that always occurs in Temecula. Anyway, thank you. Congratulations to the new members. God bless us.
Thank you very much.
Patrick Ellis. Essie Stewart.
Hello.
Hello.
I moved to Marietta twelve years ago, and I have been harassed by Marietta PD ever since I moved here. Seven years ago, I was put under heavy surveillance by Marietta PD. I called 911 on a police officer, and I guess I pissed him off. And so, I've been put under heavy surveillance since then. It's been seven years. I do not break any laws. I don't sell dope. I don't use dope. I don't even litter. And I have asked them, "Why are you surveilling me?" They always say they're not, but they are. I sleep in my car, and I have worked all my life. I paid taxes until the age of thirty-seven, when I became homeless because of depression, because of life, period. I just felt like I couldn't function in the workplace, in society. So, I just gave up. And to have a police department just harass you constantly, surveillance you for no reason, because they want revenge for me calling 911. I have high blood pressure. I have been stressed out. I have cried many nights over this, and they will not stop. They are relentless. I don't know what else to do. I don't want to be here, talking to you guys about this, but I feel like I have no other option. And I'm going to go further with this, because I want it to stop. I shouldn't be treated like this. There's things I want to say, but I'm not going to say, because I don't want to piss you guys off and make you upset. But imagine you become homeless, because anyone can become homeless, anyone, for any reason, nothing illegal. And then, you get the title homeless woman or homeless man, and then you have a police department constantly harassing you, because they feel like you're beneath them and they don't want you in this city. But you were born in this country, and you should be wherever you want to be in this country. You're not harming anybody. I work. I do DoorDash. I do Instacart. I serve the community. I take groceries to seniors. I take it into their home and put it on their counter, because they can't lift it. I do Uber for Marietta and Temecula. I keep people from drunk driving on the streets, because I'm at the wineries in Old Town and bars and clubs here. And I pay taxes. And so, imagine being treated this way. And I don't deserve this. And I'm hoping that you guys can do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie McConnell.
Good evening. I wanted to tell you a little bit of some of the things that have been going on in Marietta. I usually just do an update. I think I have left out the Historic Society lately, so I wanted to bring that up. Everybody needs to know, we have a great museum right here on Juniper Street. And last week, Pat Jennings gave a wonderful talk. It was called "Then and Now" in Marietta, and he took pictures from the eighteen-hundreds and early nineteen-hundreds, and wherever that picture was taken from, he would then, that was then, and then he would take the same picture now and show you the difference. And we had a really nice time. So, if anybody's ever interested in that type of thing, you should contact the museum, contact Mr. Jennings. He does a wonderful job. So, I just wanted to bring that up, because sometimes I forget to mention the museum. Our, our market's doing well, and the partnership with the city is doing well. Since we got Juniper Street closed down, we just, the first market, we didn't have because of rain. The second one, we got rained out, but last time, it was good. And we've had a couple of little growing pains, but everybody's getting used to how it is, and we just had a really good meeting today. Jessica and Casey and I, with the city, and we're working well in partnership. I wanted you guys to know that. We appreciate you. We appreciate the advertising that you're doing for us. It really helps. I wanted to bring up a couple of other things. One of them is that we've talked about in the future, from the Arts Council, doing a sculpture garden. As Brian knows, we've talked about that quite a bit, and we're still working on that. We have our first mural up, as you've seen on the side of Ray's Cafe. We're working on doing placards in the sidewalk, which we'd like to see from, to commemorate different families that have been prominent here in Marietta. So, those are the kinds of things we're doing, just to bring you up to date. And, oh, by the way, wouldn't it be nice to see Christmas decorations next year in Marietta? I'll leave you with that thought.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. That moves us on to our consent calendar. Approval items one through seven. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Are there any requests from the City Council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstain from voting? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
Seeing none.
I will call for a motion and a second, please. And a vote.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right. Moving on to our public hearing. Resolution of Necessity for Marietta Hot Springs Road Improvement Project CP-879. Good evening.
Good evening, now, I'm Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members, members of staff, and the general public. My name is Bob Maling. I'm the Director of Public Works and City Engineer. I'm here tonight to talk about this public hearing on the resolution of necessity. With me tonight is James Ozoff, Senior Engineer and Project Manager for the CIP-8079 Marietta Hot Springs Road Project, and I'm going to have him present to you a, a little update and summary of where we are to date with right-of-way acquisitions for this project. Turn it over to James.
Thank you, Mr. Maling. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, I will be presenting on Item Eight on your agenda, which is for a hearing for three separate resolutions of necessity for three property owners in regards to Capitol Project 8079. Project eight zero seven nine, which is the Marietta Hot Springs Road Widening Project. Some background information about the project. We'll be, we anticipate or we propose widening the roadway from four lanes to six lanes from Via Princessa to Winchester Road. Right-of-way easements and temporary construction easements are required for the project. Without these easements, we cannot construct the project. A total of eleven owners are impacted by the project. To date, staff has successfully completed negotiations with eight of the eleven owners that are impacted. Uh, three owners uh still remain. This is a vicinity map of the overall project. On the left or the west side of the exhibit is Margarita Road and on the east side is Winchester Road. That's the, the limits of the project. The three owners or four parcels are shown in color on this exhibit. On the north side of Marietta Hot Springs Road, on the nor- is a, the perp- uh light pink shading, that is the Ridge Gate Community or Ronda Association. And on the south side, in green is Mr. and Mrs. Campini. And the two blue or purple properties are, are owned by one owner, Lake Ridge Properties and Owen Apartments. This slide shows uh an overall ri- our needs for right-of-way easements and temporary construction easements. The bottom left table is color-coded. The ones on the bottom shown in, in orange are the properties that we've successfully been able to acquire these easements from. Uh, so that leaves four parcels. So you can see uh on the north, on the top of the slide is shaded in green, that's the Campini property. And Lake Ridge is shown in blue and the Owen property is shown in blue. And on the north side, uh, in light purple is the Ridge Gate property. And you can see there's quite a bit of frontage where easements are needed. So without these easements, again, we cannot construct this project. This is just a brief summary of the right-of-way easements and temporary construction easements. I won't go through everything uh in great detail, but I just wanted to point out that the right-of-way acquisition areas do vary from as little as three hundred and sixteen square feet to as much as seventeen thousand three hundred approximately for uh Ridge Gate. Uh, the right-of-way width does vary and the last two columns on the right are the temporary construction easement areas uh that are needed and their respective widths. Quick summary of negotiations. The initial offer letters were sent in November of twenty twenty-one. Throughout twenty twenty-two, negotiations commenced and we received counter offers from all parties. And in November, just a few months ago, the city provided final offers to the Ronda Association, Campini and Lake Ridge uh properties and Owen Apartments. A recent development has transpired in just last month. Uh, Lake Ridge Properties and Owen Apartments recently came to an agreement with the city for compensation, so that's good news. You may be asking why we're moving forward with a resol- resolution of necessity when uh they mentioned they're going to sign the agreement. Reason being is back in July, the owner also agreed to, to the, to our offer of compensation and we thought um negotiations were wrapped up. At that point, the owner went quiet, retained a second attorney and negotiations began again. Um, it's only just recently that the second attorney and the owner have agreed to compensation. So we look forward to closing out negotiations with this, with the, this owner. Next up is the Ronda Association. Negotiations uh are currently stalled. The city made an offer. Uh, they came back with a counter offer and the city made a counter to their counter offer. And unfortunately, we have not been able to come to terms for agreement on compensation at this time.
Can I interrupt you just one second? I just would like to make notes so everyone in the audience understands that we will um take pub- public comments uh and vote on each resolution separately. So we're taking the staff presentation as a whole, but we will vote on each resolution separately and take open public comments as well. So just to be clear. Thank you so much. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Thank you. Last but not least is the Campini Trust. Negotiations have been ongoing for fourteen months now and uh unfortunately, negotiations appear to have reached an impasse. A resolution of necessity is a precursor to the eminent domain process. If the city council elects to adopt the resolutions of necessity tonight, the city shall be entitled to commence eminent domain proceedings in Superior Court. And in those proceedings, the court will determine the amount of compensation to which the owners are entitled. The acquisitions are in the public interest and are necessary for the proposed project. On January tenth, a notice of hearing regarding adoption of resolution of necessity was mailed to Lake Ridge Properties, Owen Apartments, Ronda Association and to the Campinis. With that said, it's staff's recommendation to adopt three separate resolutions of necessity for the required acquisition of certain real property by eminent domain located along Marietta Hot Springs Road for Lake Ridge Properties, Owen Apartments, Ronda Association and Steve Campini Trust for the Marietta Hot Springs Road Widening Project. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Should you have any questions, myself and Mr. Maling are happy to answer them for you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Um, I will take council member questions. Uh, anyone have a question? Seeing none? All right, so moving on to taking the resolution um individually. Madam City Clerk, I'll open the public hearing.
Yes, thank you.
I'll open the public hearing on resolution number one. Madam City Clerk, is there any individuals requesting to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have um Steve Campini.
All right. Steve, come on up to the front podium. Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, first of all, I'm in favor of the widening project. Uh, we desperately need more uh wider roads. We have traffic congestion is probably our main problem in the, in the city of Marietta and Temecula. We started negotiations in November of twenty-one. We started negotiations in November of twenty-one when I wa- I received a letter that uh the widening project was uh, was uh being taken up. And uh, they had given me, and they, they presented me with an appraisal. And then I obtained my own appraisal from an independent appraiser who is a specialist in these eminent domain situations. And uh, he's been doing it for many years. He's local in Temecula. And uh, we come up with a little different appraisal. So I presented my appraisal and they rejected it. Now, looking at both the appraisals, I think any objective person would find the, the appraisal that I got to uh, to be more accurate. First of all, out of the six properties, the appraisal I presented, six of them were local, or four of them were local, I should say, three from Marietta, one from Temecula, and all in two thousand twenty-one. The appraisals that, that the appraiser company that the uh, the city contracted with, they were, there was only one local and it wasn't even a sale. It was just a listing. Two of them were two, from two thousand twenty, three of them in two thousand nineteen. I think if you would look at both of these appraisals, and this is just a simple rendering of the comparative sales, I think you would agree. And we're not that far off. We're only maybe twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand dollars. So I think it would be a shame to hold up the whole project for a minimum amount when I think any judge would be, would be uh judging in, in, in my favor on this. And I want to be cooperative, but I also want a fair value. So I request uh that if the clerk could make copies and present it to the city council and then each of you could review it.
That'd be fine. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, any more comments on resolution number one? Oh, that was.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we have Francisco Urbino would like to speak on item eight. So is it okay if you just move forward on this one?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Good evening again, uh council members. I'm a twenty-two-year resident of Marietta Hot Springs. I use Marietta Hot Springs Road a lot. Uh, I'm in favor of staff's recommendations to approve whatever resolutions of necessity that you need. Uh, in all fairness to the property owner that just spoke, uh, if we're only twenty-five thousand dollars apart, uh, you know, the, the city has to consider how much will it cost in additional legal counsel fees if we have to go to uh court and use eminent domain? So anyway, you know, you might want to weigh that. My first uh internship uh was with the City West Covina Redevelopment Agency and they uh, they did a lot of eminent domain and, you know, there's sometimes, you know, negotiations, whatever. But sometimes it has to be a judge, you know, that more objectively determines, okay, who is right, you know, and reviews the appraisals. But I'm in favor of widening Marietta Hot Springs Road and improving uh, uh, traffic level uh of service, hopefully to as much as A and B as we can at all hours of the day. Although I would like to see, if possible, sufficient right-of-way to have as many free right-turn lanes as possible, like if you're westbound on Marietta Hot Springs Road and want to go northbound on Whitewood. Uh, right now, I and thousands of others uh use, if we're eastbound on Marietta Hot Springs Road, uh, to get to my home, I need to make right turn onto Margarita and there is a free right turn lane uh next to that Arco AM PM. Uh, however, it gets dicey because there's a natural repairing education that, you know, the city would probably have to negotiate with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and, you know, California, I wanted to say fishing game, but now it's fish and wildlife. Uh, I would like to, you know, if we need to pave over and uh do a concrete channel for part of that uh, you know, creek and cut some trees down and do some other mitigation if involves buying an acre of ecologically sensitive land so we can still have a free right turn lane from eastbound Marietta Hot Springs Road to make a right onto southbound Margarita Road. That would be good. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Madam City Clerk?
That concludes public comments for this item.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. City Council Discussion. Any of my colleagues? Councilmember Holiday?
I just want to clarify with staff that passing these resolutions does not preclude ongoing negotiations, correct?
That is correct.
And from a personal perspective, and I, I'm sure my colleagues will agree, that eminent domain proceedings are a, a method of last resort. Um, I'm a big private property advocate and, but it can't get to the point to where we can't further what we need to do in the city. We do need this circulation element. Hot Springs, as we all know, is uh even the s- the six-lane parts get backed up severely during peak hours. Um, so I just want to make sure that the, the public is aware that we on council do not take this lightly. This is not something that's capricious or something that we, that we um are cavalier about. So um while it is a, a, a method of last resort, I encourage staff to continue with those negotiations and review those appraisals and um obviously if any way we can come to an agreement, that would be my preference.
Thank you so much for your comments and I would concur with you and everything you said as well. Any other comments from? Thank you so much. Um, so I need to uh move for a motion and a second on resolution number one.
Councilmember Stone? Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you so much. Moving on to resolution number two, I'd like to open a public hearing. Madam City Clerk, is there any individuals that are requesting to speak on this item?
Seeing none.
I'd like to close the public hearing. City Council, any discussion on resolution number two? Seeing none. I call for a motion and a second. Be patient while we're having a little technical difficulty up here.
Yes, give me a moment, please. Madam Mayor, can we do roll call vote?
We certainly may.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Holiday?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor Potem Stone?
Yes.
Mayor DeForest?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero, to adopt resolution number two, three, four, six, four, zero.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to resolution number three. Open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, is there any individuals requesting to speak on this item?
Seeing none.
Close the public hearing. City Council Discussion. Any of my colleagues wish to comment? Seeing none. I'll call for a motion and a second. Shall we do that as well as? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren, and second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Holiday. And we'll call for a?
Roll call vote. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Holiday?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Stone?
Yes.
Mayor DeForest?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero, to adopt resolution number two, three, four, six, four, one.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Uh, moving on to discussion, uh before we start with that, any council members that would like to abstain or recuse themselves? I'll ask them to um make their way out of the council chambers?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this item as I own property within a thousand feet of the project.
Thank you, sir. You will be missed. All right, moving on. Approval of the inter-agency financial contribution agreement with Western Minnetabul Water District for water infrastructure in the Innovation Zone area. Staff, maybe we have a? Staff, maybe we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and council members. Uh, this item is to consider entering into an inter-agency agreement with Western Municipal Water District to construct municipal water infrastructure in the Innovation Zone area between Jefferson and Interstate fifteen using ARPA funds. ARPA, or the American Rescue Plan Act, was approved in March of twenty-one to provide relief, uh, relief to communities by stimulating the economy. In May of twenty-one, the U.S. Department of Treasury announced the availability of ARPA funds, and your city council adopted a resolution accepting ARPA funds in April of twenty-two. Uh, the city has received a total of sixteen-point-four million dollars in ARPA funds. One of the allowed uses for ARPA pursuant to the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Eligibility Handbook, which is a mouthful, uh, is to provide potable municipal water service to areas that currently utilize wells. And staff has previously recommended up to, allocating up to seven-point-four million in ARPA funds toward water infrastructure in the Innovation Zone area. For some background on water service to this area, in February of two thousand eighteen, staff sent a letter to Lafco asking them to conduct a focused municipal service review for the west side of Marietta. The Lafco commissioners held a final hearing on that, uh, focused MSR in September of twenty-one, about three and a half years later, and simply voted to receive the report. However, prior to that, Western Municipal Water District and Rancho California Water District started discussions about how they might work together to best provide water service to the area. And subsequently, in June of twenty-two, Western Municipal Water District and Rancho California Water District entered into what I'll refer to as an historic agreement whereby Rancho California will furnish both imported water and provide system storage capacity to Western Municipal Water District in order to provide service to the area, which is in Western's district. I want to pause just for a second and say, I have not seen an agreement like this between two, um, water agencies before, so this is, this is an unusual circumstance and one that I think, uh, works for the benefit of the city. Like the Los Alamos ARPA expenditure, which was approved by your council back in August, the cost to provide water and sewer service to the Innovation Zone area is likely to re, uh, to exceed the seven-point-four million dollars as recommended for allocation here. In order to install water and sewer lines, several concurrent steps must first be completed. The city will need to complete the extension of Madison Avenue from Guava Street to Elm Street. Because of the rolling topography in the area, infrastructure cannot generally be placed until a graded roadbed is created. And although the area is in Western, uh, Western's district, the properties in that area need to be annexed into both the Metropolitan Water District and Western Municipal Water District. If all of the property owners chose to annex under a blanket annexation, the estimated cost would be around one-point-four million dollars. The ARPA funds will also be used to pay for the cost of the imported water supply and capacity agreement between Rancho California and Western, and the cost of that is approximately one-point-eight-five million dollars. The remaining ARPA funds will then be used to install infrastructure. Any additional costs would be covered by Western Municipal Water District and recovered later through capacity charges or connection fees. I want to note that using ARPA funds will substantially, and I want to emphasize substantially, reduce the cost of providing infrastructure with water and sewer infrastructure in that area. This is a map, uh, of the general innovation zone area. You see, uh, that area is outlined in red, and the, uh, the green lines show existing infrastructure that's owned by Western Municipal Water District. The blue lines, uh, are what is proposed to be installed by Western, but to reiterate, Madison, which runs diagonally more or less, uh, uh, from the upper left to the lower right through the center of the, uh, Innovation Zone area, will be installed first. The remaining lines will be installed as topography allows, or perhaps in conjunction with future road projects. So staff, uh, recommends that your council adopt, uh, the items on the screen, which would start with adopting resolution twenty-three-four-six-four-two, also approving the attached inter-agency financial agreement with Western Municipal Water District, and then lastly, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and make any non-substantive changes or updates that might be needed to implement that. Uh, with that, that concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. I would also like to note that, um, Tim Barr, the deputy general manager from Western, is here, as is, I believe, uh, Director Brenda Denstedt.
Thank you so much, Ivan, greatly appreciated. I'll move this, um, back up to my colleagues and take any questions from the dais. Um, Councilmember Lavelle?
I have no questions, but this is very exciting to see the collaboration and, uh, some solutions to some problems I've, I know has existed in the city, even before my time on council, obviously. This is, looks really good, thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one question. This is similar to the agreement that we did with Eastern, correct? Those that own the property will have the opportunity to pay to tap into the sewer and water infrastructure at, at a, at a one-time discounted fee or hopefully in agreement together? If they do it separately, it would cost them more, is that correct?
So, yes, in general, that's correct. Um, the, the benefit of the, uh, reduction in cost, if, um, Western is able to, uh, do a blanket annexation is a reduction in fees. That's more cost-effective, it's cheaper for everyone. If, if you have to do that as an individual, you have to pay an application fee again to, to Met, I believe, uh, Tim might be able to shed further light on that. So that costs more and takes longer. It's much more efficient to handle that all together if possible. And then for each person to actually connect to the, the new infrastructure, yes, they would have to pay capacity, uh, charges, otherwise are sometimes referred to as connection fees, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. This is a much-needed project, I'm so thrilled for it, thank you very much.
Councilmember Holliday? Oh, where'd he go? Oh, he's out. That's right, sorry, that was hilarious, my gosh. He told me all night, just don't let me, just don't forget me down here, so, well, I didn't, so I'll have to make sure that he's probably laughing. All right, um, Mayor Protem.
What time is it?
Yeah, wait, it's past my bedtime, obviously.
Ivan, thank you so much for your presentation. Madam Mayor, I do not have any questions.
All right, well, gosh, that lengthy, uh, comments by Holliday, so, um, I'd just like to thank everyone who came together before me, before I was even on the dais, that had the foresight, uh, to do the Lafco study in the first place, for Ivan for having the perseverance to move forward and to see this to fruition, thank you so much. Uh, to Rancho and Western, uh, to, uh, Board Member Brenda Denstedt for, uh, having perseverance for bringing this forward as well, and for actually doing something that hasn't been done before. So hats off to that for great people doing great things for our citizens, um, of Marietta. So thank you for seeing outside, um, and living outside the box. Um, that's all I have to say, I'm super excited for the partnership, and, um, after embarrassing myself terribly, I will be quiet now, so thank you so much.
Public comment?
Public comment, yes, Madam City Clerk, thank you.
Casson Klein?
Sorry. Uh, February twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen, Ivan Haller wrote an issue paper on this item, uh, that the Development Advisory Group brought to Ivan at the time, which Patrick is a colleague of mine on the Development Advisory Group. Now, Ivan is much too humble, um, to pat himself on the back, and this project certainly doesn't have the sex appeal of Rady's Children's Hospital, Dunkin' Donuts, Raising Cane's, and, uh, the Hot Springs Resort, but future generations will see and reap the rewards, uh, of this. This is, you know, he took pause and, and said how historic this is, but, uh, it, it really is. I mean, it is, it is incredible, um, and, so, you know, from, from the city's standpoint and city staff, I don't, I don't mean to diminish, you know, the water districts, but, you know, this really started with, with Larry Markham bringing it to Development Advisory Group, with Ivan penning the white paper, with former council member Kelly Ciardo moving, um, the then-city manager into taking action on this, and then Ivan staying on this with his dogged determination. So, uh, you know, I wanted to come and, and publicly recognize him because he's much too humble and much too professional, um, to talk about his good deeds, but I, I know Ivan will, uh, I know that he will look back on this one as, as one of probably a feather in his cap. So, um, thank you, Ivan, on behalf of the development community and the residents, um, just, this is really, really great, so I just wanted to make those pub, those comments publicly, thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk, any other public comments?
Yes, Tim Barr?
Good evening, uh, my name's Tim Barr, I'm the deputy general manager of Western Municipal Water District. Uh, on behalf of, and I am accompanied by Brenda Denstedt, um, a board member from Western for a long time, uh, on behalf of Western staff, the board of directors, and the customers we jointly serve in the city of Marietta, um, I want to thank you for your continued partnership. Uh, it is a pleasure to work with the Marietta team at all levels. Um, I have had the pleasure of working with Ivan on this for a number of months, uh, to bring this agreement, uh, before you as well as before Western's board. Um, I had the, um, privilege to work with Ms. Israel, um, as well as Western's council over the last couple of weeks to get it finalized and into your packet. We, uh, as Ivan put together in the staff report, the staff report did a very good job, this is a, is a monumental agreement. It builds on, on the milestone agreement that Rancho California Water District and Western penned, um, a number of months ago. Uh, it does, um, make, uh, the delivery of imported water a possibility in this, in this Innovation Zone. Uh, without the, uh, annexation fees paid to Metropolitan, uh, imported water is not available to the, to that region. Um, to answer your question about, uh, the savings, uh, a single application to Metropolitan is five thousand dollars per application, so if you do it one parcel at a time, it gets very, very expensive for the two-hundred-plus parcels in this region. Um, but if we blanket them all together, Metropolitan will only charge five thousand dollars, so it is a profound savings. So, um, the agreement that Western has with Rancho California Water District allows Western to wheel imported water through the Rancho system, store it in the Rancho system, and deliver it specifically to this region. It is a very unique opportunity. The, uh, ARPA funds that, uh, remain in balance will be used to offset the cost of the distribution, um, pipes that are required to deliver water to every individual parcel. Um, it will produce that cost substantially as well. So, um, I, as a member of the staff and the team that put this together, um, I encourage you to, um, adopt this, um, agreement and authorize signature. It will go before Western's board, uh, next week. Uh, the Engineering Operations and Water Resource Committee of the board has already reviewed it and authorized pushing it forward to the board of directors, so I do expect, I am very optimistic that the board of directors will authorize execution, so thank you again.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to jump in on his little
Twenty seconds.
... show here. Uh, there are a couple more people that I want to make sure that we thank. So this process actually started all the way back in twenty-fifteen with several of your council members that were sitting at that time. Jonathan Ingram, who is in the audience, was also part of that. But I also want to recognize, not only was our staff phenomenal in working together and making sure that this agreement came forward, and the Rancho California Water District team that worked cooperatively with us to make all of this happen and come up with a new solution to find and have a significant savings to your residents and customers and business that want to develop down there, but there were also some very entrenched residents that wanted to make sure. Barbara Ankle, Catherine Elliott, and Daphne Grisby, who all drove this process as well, and made sure that all the residents were very well-informed and engaged on everything that was going on. So this was really a monumental effort by a lot of people, and so I don't want to just make sure that Western and, and staff do that, but there were the residents that were also, they showed up at every one of our committee meetings, they showed up at every one of the Lafco commission meetings, they walked door to door to make sure that all the residents knew what was going on with the Lafco and the MSR. So, um, thank you to council, thank you to staff who did a phenomenal job in working with us, thank you to my colleagues on my board, and thank you to the previous council. When Jonathan and I spent many a day sitting in Starbucks, having conversations and going over documents on this, so we really are looking forward to getting this and lifting it off the ground, so approve this thing, so we can move on, because my seven years has really been a long haul on this, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you to you both.
Patrick Ellis?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, staff. Uh, Patrick Ellis, President and CEO of the Marietta Waldemar Chamber of Commerce. I don't really think I need to say anything more than it hasn't already been said. Um, this is a game changer for, for Marietta, especially for the southern corridor that, you know, we talked, that we have deemed the Innovation Zone. Um, this will make development possible on so many different levels and, and is exciting for the next, next chapter. Um, the only thing I will say in response to everything that was said is, um, uh, yes, it's not on the same par as Dunkin' Donuts, but Marietta Hot Springs, I would say, that still is a pretty big deal, thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk?
Francisco Urbina?
Good evening for the third time, Francisco Urbina, twenty-two-year resident of Marietta Hot Springs. Uh, I, uh, want to compliment, uh, Assistant City Manager Ivan Haller for giving an excellent PowerPoint presentation. He's a person of one hundred and one percent integrity, so I agree with staff's recommendation, and I agree with the, uh, comments made by, uh, the new council member, John, uh, Lavelle, uh, that it's nice when multiple affected agencies and parties come together for the common good, and the state mo, the, the state motto of this great state of Ohio is, united we stand, divided we fall. So this is an example of, of the parties coming together for the better good, and a, as we know, I know I'm preaching to the choir, uh, without water, we can't have human life, we, we can't have vegetation, and we can't grow food, uh, take care of wildlife, et cetera, and, uh, maybe, uh, later on, if it hasn't already been done, appropriate city staff under the direction of Assistant City Manager Ivan Haller can look into see if there are federal funds, uh, that would expand the use, uh, or pay for infrastructure for reclaimed water, and maybe retrofitting, uh, homes, uh, if legally allowed by the state of California, to, uh, yeah, redirect gray water, uh, uh, in, into the backyards for landscaping, because landscaping takes up a substantial amount of because landscaping takes up a substantial amount of residential water use. Anyway, thank you, and I'm glad that our progressive, beautiful city of Marietta is moving forward and that we have great city staff, such as Assistant City Manager Ivan Haller. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, any comments or discussion from the dais? Councilmember Lavelle?
Yeah. Yeah, the resounding message tonight is collaboration, obviously, and after hearing from almost every party, it seems there's one theme, and Ivan, you're a huge part of this. And, you know, in my other life, the nicknames are a really fun thing, and I think Ivan Haller, your steward for water, sounds really good.
What's going on?
No, I just, I just...
Ivan just turned red.
This is really cool, and thanks for going with the flow.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lavelle, for that. All right, any other comments? Seeing none. Oh, seeing none. Okay, we're going to move forward, Madam City Clerk. Could I call for a motion and a second?
Motion carries unanimously four zero, with the reminder that Councilmember Holliday has recused himself.
Thank you so much. What a great thing just happened. So there's some history in the making after a long time and a lot of hard work. So thank you so much. Moving on, governing board announcements. Madam City Clerk, where'd she go? Oh, Madam City Clerk, I'll go ahead and do that. Councilmember Warren? Would you like to start us off this evening?
I would. Thank you very much. If my slideshow or whatever would come up, that would be wonderful. Like many of us, we attended the candlelight vigil honoring Riverside County Deputy Darnell Calhoun. This city really has a heart, and I'm very, very proud to be a part of it. I also had the honor of attending his service with our chief, and I appreciate, and Mayor Protem Lloyd Stone. It was heartfelt. It was hard, but it was just beautiful. So thank you for letting me tag along. Back to the Women's Society at the Knowles. I love those ladies, and for some reason, they love me. Also, on the seventh, I attended, along with Mayor Protem, the Taste of Soul and the Black Business Expo at the Marietta Community Center, and it was a blast, and we had a wonderful time. So if they're going to make this an annual event in Marietta, and I just love this, so we had a great time. They gave us a basket of snacks and some hand sanitizers. So. In my closing remarks, may I go ahead and do this now? Okay. Could you stop the timer for me, please? Okay, is that okay? I'm going to try really hard to get through this. This evening, I would like to honor a wonderful Marietta business owner and my dear friend Susan Carberry, who lost her battle against stage-four brain stem glioma cancer in her spinal cord earlier this past Sunday morning. Susan owned the Kate Cottage for over fifteen years, serving our community with the biggest heart and the most delicious specialty in wedding cakes, birthday cakes, plus her amazing gourmet cupcakes. She was very involved in the Marietta-Wildemar Chamber of Commerce and was honored as Small Business of the Year in two thousand and sixteen. Her contributions to our community were endless, always giving and asking nothing in return. Not only was she a talented baker and a creative cake designer, but she was also gracious, kind, and caring. This is a huge loss for our community, and I truly believe Marietta is a better place because of Susan Carberry, who is a beautiful person inside and out. Rest in peace, my sweet friend, and know you will never be forgotten. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Warren. Prayers for her family as well. Councilmember Lavelle?
I have no updates to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliday?
Yes, if I could have my slides up, please? I attended the swearing-in of our Sheriff Chabianco. Certainly thankful to have him as our elected sheriff. He's doing an amazing job up there. Also met with one of the local Rotary groups, Marietta Rotary here in town, which is doing some great things in our community. Also attended the candlelight vigil with the rest of my colleagues up here for Deputy Calhoun. Super thankful for the outpouring of support from the community, one of the reasons we live in one of the gray cities in the country. I met with the executive staff of Loma Linda University Marietta Campus. Thank you, Mr. Lavelle, for arranging that. And also attended the Chamber Mega Mixer, which was very well-attended. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. That was a great job. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Mayor Protem?
I will defer to the next meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Well, I will defer mine as well, but I will toot the city of Marietta's horn. So I am super excited to announce that the Inland Empire Magazine has determined that the city of Marietta, voted by the Inland Empire Magazine readers as Best City for the Inland Empire Magazine, Best Inland Empire City two thousand and twenty-three. Super excited. That's what an honor that is to have that. And to top things off, the city of Marietta was named in a reader's survey of the Inland Empire Magazine as the best places to work, and we know because we got the best staff. So congratulations as well. So congratulations, Marietta. Congratulations, our city manager, for making it a great place to work for all. And we're excited to ask for adjournment on a positive note. And let's adjourn. I'm going to use the gavel again.